Alright, so we will call the order at 7:02 and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
It's to the flag of the United States of America and to do the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I need approval of the agenda, but I need to add to it. And I would like to add after our, after five, um, number five of the minutes, we need to add Nick to committees. So that will be after that one. So, um, we still need an approval of the edited now agenda.
Someone.
Second it.
So Josh and then Len second. And then all in favor? Thank you. Um, any public input or announcement? Do we have? Did you get any emails?
I don't think so.
Alright. And we don't need a board discussion. So, um, approval of minutes and we'll do these separate. Um, so approve of the minutes from 6:15 of the regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Liz. I need a second.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick. All in favor?
If asked for discussion first.
Oh, sorry. Any discussion on those, the minutes from the regular meeting? Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. And approval of minutes from 6:15, the special meeting that we had.
I can make a question.
Thank you, Liz. And a second? Nick? Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all in favor?
I, I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Okay. So everybody and then Josh abstains and we have no nays. And then approval of the minutes for the 6:20 special meeting?
I'll move.
Okay. And second?
Looks like me.
And then any discussion on those minutes?
Um, I have a question. I don't see one dated 6:20.
That was the meeting with, um, Tyler.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll abstain if it wasn't.
The, the 6:20 was when we called the special meeting to do support staff contract.
Okay. Yeah, never mind. That's what it was. Do you see it, Liz?
No.
It was virtual.
Yes, fully virtual.
Fully virtual.
I think. So the, the title, uh, the file is saved as 6:20, but the title is listed the 15th.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Okay, appreciate that. So yeah, that is one. I'll abstain because I, oh wait, no, I was there. Never mind. That's kind of confused. Thank you.
Yeah, good catch, Nick.
Um, are we at yes? Uh, all in favor?
I'm abstaining again.
Okay. All yes, except for Josh abstaining. Okay. Do we have any student representative updates? I'm assuming this summer they're probably not going to talk to us.
And we, uh, we are going to be looking for one new student member starting in the fall.
Okay. And we're coordinating with Caitlin on it?
Yep.
Um, bylaws approval. Did everybody get the final draft copy of the bylaws from, that's got all the edits done? Okay. Did you guys get it all? Talking to the wall like.
You picked that seat.
I know. Just out there. Someone could see what I'm doing.
That's why I always said next word Josh was.
I thought about it today.
Maybe, maybe if the tech director got us another projector in here.
I have ideas.
He's already spending enough.
I know, I know.
I know. We already have a proposal to go through.
Giant mirror.
Um, okay, so I guess I need a motion to approve the bylaws.
Can I have a quick synopsis of the bylaws? I've read them, but what are we looking to accomplish?
Is it, is it worth just highlighting big changes? Would that get at what you're thinking, Nick, or?
So as I read through them, there are some notable things that we're supposed to comply with per state law that are not mentioned in the bylaws. I just want to have a clear consensus. Do we need to mention both or are we okay not mentioning both?
The, the bylaws, if I may, that were basically created when, uh, the schools merged. When they came together as Mill River Unified Union School District. And so those bylaws were basically how the district would run and operate. And they were agreed to by all the other schools first. What we've done is we took those bylaws and then we looked them over and made changes where we felt it was necessary. So it, when you're looking at something that the state requires that isn't in the bylaws, it may be in our policies that covers that.
Yep.
And not nece- not necessarily in the bylaws.
Got it.
Okay.
Adrian?
I'm just curious, um, that was Nick, I'm assuming who was speaking.
Yes.
What, um, what is missing that you feel like, um, should be in our bylaws?
I'm just trying to get a context as to where the bylaws sit as to, as to relationship to state and/or federal level guidelines, you know? Like for instance, all school board meetings need to follow Robert's Rules of Orders. They're not listed in the bylaws.
I think that, I mean, my understanding all along is state and federal law, it's understood that we're going to follow those.
Yep.
So we don't lift them in policy necessarily either.
And when the board does a reorganization meeting in March, they, don't, don't you specify that you're going to follow Robert's rules for small boards?
Yes.
Um, so that does happen annually?
That's, that's why I was looking for that line of clarity because I wasn't involved in the past discussions of the bylaws.
It's a good question.
I can chime in on that too, Nick. Um, Vermont statute says that boards will articulate what system of governance they will use. So the state statute does not say school boards will use Robert's rules. State statute says that boards will, will articulate or announce what rules of, of meetings they will be utilizing. And then our bylaws say that we will use Robert's rules.
And I think, uh, our bylaws also cover some specific provisions that are open in Robert's rules. So for example, Robert's rules allows you to set quorums certain ways. So in the bylaws, you could set your quorum numbers. Uh, so if you're thinking.
And I'm just using that as an example.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, federal law is always going to be the first thing we got to follow. State's going to come next. These are local things that we have some decision-making ability, so we write them into our bylaws. Does that kinda?
Answers my question.
Oh, okay.
And part of it was too, how the board was going to, the new board, because it wasn't, previously there was a Clarendon Elementary Board.
Number of representatives.
Wallingford Elementary Board, Mill River Board. And so when they joined together, it, it was important that, and they all had different ways of operating. And so part of the reason for the bylaws was so that the, this board, the Unified Union School District Board had operating rules and regulations, if you will.
Yep.
In fact, it was even part of our, our, um, application to the state Board of Education when we unified.
Yep.
We had to have those articulated before we actually were granted permission to unify.
Okay, I'm good.
Um, alright, so I still have a motion to approve the bylaws.
So I have to be honest, I haven't had the chance to read them and I apologize because I'm not being honest. Uh, anyway, I haven't had the chance to read them, so if there's a vote I'm going to abstain, I apologize.
I'll make a motion to accept them.
Take a second.
Um, all in favor?
No, discussion.
Oh, do we have a discussion about accepting the bylaws now? I saw Adrian's mouth, but you're on mute. No, you're good? Okay.
Talking to my dog.
Okay, sorry. Oh, Ken. Um, alright, so we have no discussion, so take it to a vote, all in favor?
Maybe we should probably do a roll call.
Okay. Alright, Josh?
Yes.
Nick?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't privy to all the meetings.
Paul?
Aye.
Len?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Liz?
I'm abstaining because I, I have to read the final question.
Uh, Adrian?
Um, I approve, thank you.
Me, yes. Good. Alright, so the bylaws are approved. Um, assessment and goal updates.
Okay, let me, I'm gonna.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Weren't you going to put Nick on committee?
I totally didn't even write it in.
Oh, yeah.
After five is what I heard.
Okay. Thank you, Len. Alright, so we need to approve to add Nick to some committee mem- committee, committees. Hold on, I'm finding my thing here. So Nick and I have discussed and talked and why can I not? Um, he would. Liked, what is wrong? Okay, like to be added to buildings and grounds, negotiations and community engagement. Is that what we said, Nick? Because I lost that.
I'm, I'm getting it up. It's buildings and ground, negotiations.
Policy, no.
Policy.
I wanted to do a policy. Um, yes, Adrian, I heard you.
I just wanted to point out, um, we just signed two three-year contracts. So in case you have time to spare, there won't be a negotiation meeting.
Okay.
Probably for the near future.
Okay.
Just in case Nick wants to join something else.
Alright, so then we'll do buildings and grounds, negotiations and policy, which is I think our last email. So can we, are you guys okay with voting on all three of them together? Or do you want me to pull out each committee separately?
Pull them all together.
Pull them all together?
Sure.
Okay. So can I have an approval of the motion for Nick to join as of now? Buildings and grounds committee, nego- no community engagement?
No. You didn't say community engagement, did you?
And policy, I'm taking you out of negotiations.
Originally.
I didn't, couldn't join negotiations because it's perfectly fine.
Well, I don't want him to not.
But we have a point that can come off. But, but there's just not much going on.
Alright. No, I understand.
And we'll have a restructure in.
March.
March.
Right. Hopefully nothing will come up that the negotiations committee has to actually, you know, get involved.
I want you on buildings and grounds. Alright, so buildings and grounds, community engagement and policy.
Good choices.
I seriously thought about this really hard. Um, okay, so.
Liz made a motion.
Thank you, Lizzy, second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Um, all in favor of Nick? Uh, do you want a roll call, Ann, or?
Is it unanimous? We don't need one, two, three, four?
No, it's unanimous. Okay. Alright, thank you. Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you. Welcome.
Totally forgot where I was going here.
You missed the policy meeting.
Yeah.
Is that just before this one?
Um, okay, so now on to assessment and goal updates.
Okay. Oh, good, that's popping up there. Uh, folks that were here, I think I gave everybody a, a copy in person, just in case. I know some people like to have that in front of them. Uh, folks who are not in person, you can see that up on the screen hopefully because we're seeing it here. Uh, shout if you can't see that. So I had told you a, a month or so ago that in the summer I'd have some updates for you. We have our local common assessments done and I can share that information with you. I also told you that I'd give you an update on board goals and where we were with some of those items. So that is what I have for you this evening. I have two pieces that I'm not going to share with you because one is not public yet and the other one I don't have yet. And when I get there, I'll explain that. Uh, so goal one, first thing we're looking at. I have the board goals language there for you, so you can easily see what that language is. I've got a little bit of commentary there. Uh, so these are goals that did not have, uh, clear targets that we could measure progress toward necessarily. But I did want to give you an update on them. So thinking about that goal one, student opportunities academics, providing support and flexible learning in course pathways. Uh, we've been working on those goals. That's work that's always going on. Uh, we never stop trying to support students. But I think it's worth pointing out that, uh, big work we did last year was strengthening our educational support teams. Those are the teams that come together and look at information when students are struggling and try to figure out how we can best support those students. Uh, that was big work we did last year and we're going to be continuing this coming year. Uh, as we consolidated as a district, a lot of things happened fast, like the budget consolidated. Not everything has been so fast. So trying to get on the same page with how our educational support teams operate and making sure that they're operating in ways that we're getting our students everything they need has been ongoing work. Uh, we also have some ESAR funding. Yep, Liz? You're unmuted, Liz.
Sorry. Um, this may not be the appropriate time. To that point, Brian, I'm just curious, do ESTs follow students from the sixth grade into Mill River?
So we have a practice of EST plans being reviewed at the beginning of the year for students who were on them the previous year. So we don't have.
Incoming, including incoming six, uh, seventh graders?
My understanding would be yes. Um, I, so the rationale is we're not going to put a student on a plan and just send the plan and say good luck. But that folks at the beginning of the year are going to be meeting and looking at that student and history and determining do they still need to be on a plan? Good question. ESAR funding, we have some folks that are actually going to come in our personnel committee update that, that we have identified some positions where ESAR funding could support our students with some academically. These are short-term, one-year, maybe two-year investments that that funding has allowed us to do. Uh, we have some academic positions, we have some behavioral support positions. So you'll hear some of those when we get to personnel. Uh, so that's definitely been something on our minds. Athletics at our last board meeting, um, I believe it was our last board meeting, we shared a little bit that Kim had been exploring posting a slightly different elementary AD position. Uh, we increased the funding for that and we shifted the job description so that we could find something that, that would serve our elementary students better and try to increase participation. Uh, we have that hire coming in our personnel, uh, report tonight as well. So that's ongoing work that we have been engaging in. And our pre-K coordinator this year has been working hard to try and make our programs a little more equitable. You have scenarios where sometimes one school provides early care, so you can drop off early. One school doesn't. Some schools provide after care for certain hours, some schools don't. We really want to make sure that we're offering all our, all our families support and it's not just, oh, I'm lucky I go to Wallingford so I get something a little different, if that makes sense. Uh, so she's been working hard on that. Adrian?
Are we, um, inter- are expanding, um, pre-K or to, to, to be equitable amongst all, all the schools? Or just the after care and pre-care?
Uh, we are looking at, we are looking at trying to get everything as equitable as possible. So some schools may have a pre-K program for part of the day and then after care for the rest of the day. That ratio of pre-K to after care might be a little different from school to school. And that's definitely something that, that our pre-K coordinator is looking at trying to make consistent everywhere. We, we are lucky because in the region, maybe even the state, we provide very low-cost, uh, after care for our caregivers, our families. Uh, I, I'm one district over and we've been looking at programs and they're all part-time programs. So to, so to work 40 hours a week and have a pre-K age student engaged in either pre-K or after care uh, from one provider, the school system, I think is pretty rare. Uh, but we do still have some work to try and make that a little more consistent from site to site.
Cause it's, uh, the, like, first year PKs, it's only the first half of the day that gets paid for, right? And then after that, it's after.
And we try to offer after care, so it's actually a full day of care.
Yeah.
One way or another, but yeah. Student growth is the big one, uh, and that's the one that I've got some scores for you. Uh, this has a lot of pieces and parts to it. Uh, local common assessments are showing an interesting picture into how, uh, last several years have affected student learning. You have a printout. Uh, if you flip to the next page, you'll see STAR scores. That's our local common assessment. Uh, you can see that we've had some trends that have shifted going from year to year these last four years. You can also see that that dotted black line, that is our board goal. Uh, that is where we have set our sights and what we have decided we need to get to. Uh, so you can see that at some points we make progress towards that and at some points we don't. I would ask if you notice anything interesting when you're looking at those? I can tell you what I think or how I interpret them, but how I interpret them is not the only story.
Well, certainly before 2020.
Yep.
Things looked pretty good.
Yeah, yep.
And after? It all looks good.
Yep. Yep. There's definitely a downward trend that tends to happen in a lot of these lines, uh, around 2020. Yep.
Do those compare nationally?
Uh, that's a great question and we can see that in ASPAC data. We can see statewide in ASPAC data. Uh, I can't share that with you tonight necessarily because that's not public, but that's a great question. Is this a trend that we're seeing nationally? Uh, what, Renaissance is the company that provides STAR 360. Uh, what they shared with us was that ELA was not dropping as much nationally as math was dropping nationally. What they also shared was that it was a trend that most folks were seeing. Um, and they gave some rationales for why they thought that was. So, you know, are we the only school that has struggled in the pandemic and our scores have taken a hit? I'd say far from it. Do we have work to do and can we do better? Absolutely. Other things you notice?
I think last year showed some improvements. I was, I'm pretty excited about that.
Where, what are you looking at specifically?
Well, I was looking at the graduation rates, not the actual testing.
Oh, 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 fair enough.
I'm looking, sorry, I moved on.
Mm-hmm.
And I was really, um, pretty pleased by that.
Mm-hmm.
Because I thought other schools had lost students and it seems like we must have, have made a real effort to connect with the kids that were, um, that were, you know, sort of on tenuous relationships. Now we just need them to pay more attention while they're in school.
Hmm. There's, there's a reason we're talking about more behavior support because we have, I think, a year of more kids out of classes than ever, uh, which will be interesting when we get to our, uh, student discipline data. But we have more kids, I think, with minor infractions, more classroom disruptions. That's a national trend too, we've been hearing and seeing. Uh, there's a reason we're trying to add that support. You know? I, I am a little surprised that we see some math trends that have gone up reasonably when a lot of the conversation has been that math has taken a bigger hit. So I think that's a little hopeful that we're seeing, we're not seeing math continue to decline. While we had a rough year, we still made some gains in some areas. I think it's really interesting to see that your Tinmouth and Shrewsbury lines are the ones that make the biggest jumps often. Two, three kids.
Small core, core.
Two, three kids can make a big swing.
Yeah.
Uh, when you're talking about a school that size.
Do you know what the, um, attendance rate was for this year? Like, was this year a abnormal year for, for, for missing out?
Yeah. I would say that if, uh, data probably about halfway through the year, when I was looking at attendance rates, you, you could say that roughly 50% of all of our students across the district were chronically absent.
Yeah.
And I was actually just talking to somebody down in Two Rivers because they were looking at some of their state reporting. Um, and their comment was, I think it's kinda, I think it's funny that the state is telling us how many of our students have been chronically absent because we all kind of know that. Like, we just lived this pandemic where quarantine was 10 days at the beginning of last year, shifted to five days in, in January. So yeah, absolutely, we saw that. But I think, I think a lot of people saw higher chronic absence too.
I mean, I just don't know how you're gonna do well. Like, you know?
Yeah.
Because at least during, like, when we were saying, you know, when we were out of school, there were, like, it was still hard, but there was packages, there was like, if you were at home, you could at least try.
Yeah.
But if you're in this wishy-washy period that we're in, that it's like, if you're at home, how are you gonna do well on these tests, like afterwards? Especially if you don't have a good support structure.
When we were, were fully remote for a time period, kids could not feel good, but still go virtual.
Yeah.
I mean, it was like, you know? Been working at home for two years too, you know? Oh, I got a headache, but also I can still work my, you know, nine hours.
Quarantine didn't take you out of class.
No.
You could still be in class, you know?
Then you run into, okay, we're back here, the 10-day, then down to the five-day. Now you've got, honestly, being a parent, parents scared if their child, it's, and then they're just pulling for however many days that that child may feel ill because you don't want to risk anything else. So I think we're, have that whole late two, three-year bubble going on too.
Yeah. And, uh, studies will show something like, uh, attendance is a reasonable indicator for performance. Uh, it, it tends to be about a 50/50. If you're chronically absent, there's a 50% chance you're not going to graduate, um, which is kind of scary. Uh, this is kind of a no-brainer, but an even better indicator of whether you're going to graduate or not, if you're failing classes. Um, that's one of the best ones. If you fail one class, you should be, you should be on the at-risk list. Uh, because that's a pretty, pretty common, that's more like 80% of students who start failing classes.
Well, and I, I.
But attendance does definitely affect.
Yeah, because I think if you're not attending, the chances of you being successful are, are lessened.
Yep.
And so, you know, I, I think they are, in, in my mind anyways, very directly related.
Yeah. We tend to look at, and I know you got a question, Adrian. We tend to look at attendance in early grades because we're not necessarily looking at course failures.
Right.
But like K1, 2, if you miss a lot of school, we know you're going to have a struggle later in, later in, uh, your, your educational career. Adrian?
I was just going to say, I mean, having dealt with, you know, with touring kids as part of, of the GAL program, it is unbelievably indicative of kids are absent all the time. There is something going on either with them directly or with their families or both.
it is unbelievably indicative of kids are absent all the time. There is something going on either with them directly or with their families or both. And it's a bigger problem.
Yeah.
The pandemic has made it sort of a little bit more gallantary. Every, a lot of kids are, are, are out a lot. And it's difficult for schools to know which are the kids that they need to focus on because they're absent, because they really have had exposures, they've had somebody in their family sick or whatever, or whether there's something going on. You know, that, that needs some, some interference from the school to break up whatever cycle those kids are in. And I think we have to be really careful if we see kids missing school to differentiate, you know? Is this a kid that we need to focus on because there's, there's some kind of mental health issues or, or health issues at home or substance abuse or whatever? Uh, we can't just say, oh, well, they, you know, it's just, they've had, they've had pandemic stuff.
Half.
It could be something else.
And half those kids are gonna be fine. Half aren't. We need to know what else is going on. Yeah. Paul?
At, at what point do we reach out to families when we see a pattern? At what point do we reach out and how do we do that?
Great question. Um, the, a year ago, the Agency of Education told us we needed goals in three areas. Academic, social, emotional, and attendance engagement. So something that I actually spent a lot of time this year talking with principals about was tho- those goals that they set. So that attendance one, people were doing things like, uh, Clarendon, I'm talking to Fred and figuring out a system. One absence, uh, admin assistant Crystal Gibbs is picking up the phone to contact family. One absence. Shrewsbury, Marge up there doing the same thing. So I'd say elementary level, pretty consistently, they're gonna be making a phone call with one absence. There's gonna be some contact home. That's, that's, that was their goal. And from, from those ongoing conversations, I feel like they did a pretty good job of meeting that goal this year, even though that was a lot of calls home. A lot of kids out more than we normally see. High school, a little bit harder. Um, high school had been doing automated phone calls. So that it wasn't necessarily, uh, I'm gonna talk to a caregiver and figure out what's going on, but that we at least are notifying families. So when a kid's out, they know, we know. Uh, at the high school, they have an attendance committee and, and when they get to three or five or seven, they're gonna have triggers for those levels. So they're not necessarily gonna be reaching out first time, but they're gonna be reaching out before it gets to that truancy point and having those conversations. The high school does have a more formal process too, where if it gets to a certain number of absences, they're gonna have the caregivers come in and have a meeting. The elementary schools deal with that a little, little less formally. Uh, but they're still gonna, they're gonna have those conversations around five unexcused absences or ten, because ten is really the trigger for truancy. So we've got some, some official letters we send home at the five and the ten points, um, but we do try to make those calls earlier. If we wait till five, it's almost too late, if that makes sense. Good question. Uh, uh, one position that we're looking at at the high school next year is somebody to assist with that. Because we've seen good things at the elementary school when the phone gets picked up the first time. Uh, so we need a little more capacity at the high school to do that. We're gonna try that for a year and see if that really does support keeping kids in school a little more, if that makes sense.
I just know because my wife was a long-time teacher.
Yeah.
And, uh, hearing the, the war stories. And, uh, I didn't know if we ever interfaced with social workers because a lot of times they're involved with a family that got any number of issues that are affecting the kid.
Yeah, absolutely. We definitely get involved when things start getting to the truancy level. We'll start connecting with, uh, local authorities for that work. Absolutely. Yeah. We're, we're not completely on our own when we start getting into higher, higher attendance levels there. So Sback, um, Sback is not public. And part of the frustrating part with Sback is it takes so long for it to become public. I shared Sback with you maybe in January because I think this past year it was public in December, maybe. Um, they shoot for around October or November. So, uh, I can tell you that Sback, um, I'd say has similar trends, but I'd say the math is a little more promising than looking at these ones right in front of us. I can show you that when it's in public, when it is public. We, we are allowed to send those results home to caregivers, but we're not allowed to do anything with them publicly. Uh, we can use them locally, teachers can plan with them, they can look at next year's class and try and get an idea of how that class is looking and how to hit the ground running with that, uh, but we can't do anything too publicly with it. So that's the best I can tell you in public right now on Sback. Questions? Reminder, Sback is going away, which is really interesting. We still have not, and I know BJ's very, very curious about this, but we still have not heard from the state that it's going away or what's coming. We just know that that's what's gonna be happening, uh, cause the State Board of Education minutes show that they made that decision and there's a new, new group coming in. Uh, I was thinking that it was gonna be after this year, because of course you're gonna wrap up, you know? It's pretty quick to change assessments in the summer and then have a new assessment come out in the spring, right? Uh, when we dug and we looked at the minutes, it really is next year. So Sback, it will be very hard to do a new assessment and compare to Sback, cause it will be a new assessment. So that same thing we saw where, you know, kneecap scores traditionally were about here in a fairly straight line for the district for ten years. And then Sback kinda was here and that, that gap, while they were similar trends, but the gap, because they were two different assessments, who knows where this new assessment will be? So it, it'll be hard for us to know how we're doing based on that. Uh, which is why I think we need to pay very careful, close attention to our local assessments. Cause this is something that's not going away and this is something that we can keep using as a baseline. Uh, while that is shifting, we have some consistency here, if that makes sense. Paul?
What, what was the rationale on, and it seems like that's a lot of changes in not too many years
Yeah.
to systems that obviously, uh, don't track with each other.
Yep. BJ, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Um, I was just gonna say, there is a AOE test administration work group session.
Yep.
That's going on August second.
Great.
That I know I'm registered for. I'm wondering if that might.
Something will come out after that?
It's possible. It's not written on the agenda, but part of it is introduced the purpose of this meeting. So I think there may be some light coming down after those meetings happen.
The, the most I could glean from the State Board of Education minutes, uh, if I recall correctly, the Agency of Education was proposing that they change because they did not feel that Sback was, was working as well as they thought it was gonna work. Um, I don't remember specifics. It was, what I can remember was fairly general testimony, if that makes sense. Um, I can, I can dig those minutes up and share them with the board, if that would be helpful.
They, they change assessments so often, I, you know, I have a difficult time even.
Yeah.
Putting.
We were on kneecap for a long, long time. We were.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Then Sback, it's been what, year six or so?
Yeah, but again, that, you know?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's helpful when it changes as often as.
Yeah, you'll lose the trend. Yeah.
You're just gonna.
Well, and I think, and when we talk strategic planning, I think we need to, we need to identify the things that are important to us.
Yeah.
Not what's important to the AOE or important to whatever company, you know, these assessment dollars are going to. What do we care about? You know, we can track that as long as we're here. Cause, uh, trying to, trying to hitch up to that wagon, I don't think is gonna help us. We need to have our own program. Cause I'm not okay with just saying, oh, who knows next year? I wanna stick with things that we know and we can use, if that makes sense. Data literacy was, was one of the goals here and we've been working to try and do that. Uh, we've been doing those little bits of data. You're not just hearing from me twice a year on data. We've been trying to weave that in, so I, I like that that's in there. Uh, that's that student growth, uh, D. Uh, student growth E, that dropout rate, you'll see down on the bottom there. That dropout rate is better than the last two years. Um, it's, sorry, the graduation rate is better than the last two years. Not quite as good as the previous years there, but that cohort four-year graduation rate, um, is, is even better. Uh, so that means that graduation rate, if we have students who are not dropping out and coming back for a fifth year or a sixth year, that graduation rate's gonna be low. That cohort rate means that they're graduating in the four planned years, if that makes sense. Does that make sense why there are two different numbers there? Okay.
How many, you, how many kids are not doing it in four? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, you know, I'd say probably five, five or so. And I'll say that that's actually been a trend for the last handful of years. And I would not say that's because there are any problems. Sometimes that's the plan and sometimes that's the best way to support some of our students who might not be ready. In, in other words, there are some students who could graduate and they stick around. Uh, does that make sense? I know I'm talking kinda general there. Um.
I think we have the idea.
Okay, fair enough. Students who are really struggling and just don't have the credits to graduate and can't pull it off, might be one out of those four. Maybe two out of the five, if that makes sense. Uh, equity. Uh, work on equity goals is ongoing. We'll have those updates in September as, as outlined there. I do have suspension data for you, uh, which is interesting to see. Um, I'm curious what folks think. Uh, what do you notice about the suspension data? Yeah, Lynn, what do you notice?
Just chuck a little over here. Well, it, it always amazes me when you, when you look at the number of students involved.
Yeah, sure.
And, and, and the number of days applied.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's, it's a small percentage of students.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I know that from experience.
Yes.
That, that, you know, it, it's tough. It's tough when you have twenty kids back in eighteen, nineteen. And there's eighty-nine days of suspension among twenty kids. Figure that out.
Yeah.
And I can't do the math, but I mean, some of you could. Can figure it out. Uh, you know, same way even with twenty-one and sixty-one.
Yep.
That's the first thing that I see.
And interesting that we don't necessarily have the number of students going down. That that's staying somewhat consistent, minus that twenty-twenty-one year.
Right.
Well, what was that twenty-twenty-one year?
It's hard to get suspended when you're.
Nobody was here. And the high school had that hybrid schedule, so half the kids were in a building. We only had half the kids at a time when they were here. So, yeah, absolutely. Um, things went down then. Uh, somebody had a question or comment? Adrian?
Um, there was a, an interesting, um, thing, I think it was on Vermont Digger, about kids that aren't really counted in our suspension data.
Yep.
Because we send them home and I, I know this anecdotally from some, um, communications that the school board was sort of privy to.
Yep.
That, that seemed to be happening, at least in one case, in our school. And I, I was curious because, you know, I, I like the fact that the number of days that kids are out is, is getting less than, and, you know, other than.
Yeah.
Like if there were less kids involved, but I mean, it's certainly, percentage-wise, it had, it has gone up a little bit because our student body has gotten smaller.
Yep. Yeah, true, true.
But I am very curious about that sort of unofficial suspension. Has to be.
What I'll tell you, yeah, what I'll tell you is we have addressed that in the, in, I don't know, the past year. The past year, we've addressed that specifically, uh, because it has happened. I don't think it happens with us too often because we've had a, a fair number of folks around long enough that, that they understand that. And the places that we've addressed it, uh, it was a, it was a misunderstanding and it was a, oh, I thought I was doing something good for the family and for the kid. So I'm not gonna tell you that that never happens in our district, but I will tell you that as recently as this past year, we've addressed that. And we've said, hey, uh, you, oh, you did that? Um, that's not really okay.
We understand that that's an issue.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, saying, saying Suzie's having a rough day, hey, mom, can you come pick her up? She's just having a rough day. That is a suspension. Um, and, and, yeah. When that happens and we're aware of it, we definitely, we definitely have that conversation.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. No, that's good, good to bring up. Because we don't, we don't want numbers on paper to look good when we really were sending kids home. That's not okay. Uh, that's, I think, uh, lying. It really is.
I wouldn't have said that it was on purpose, even in these other districts.
No, no, fair enough.
I'm happy that we're understanding that that is an issue.
And like, there's a, the big thing, we just had like a ten-minute conversation about how absenteeism is a pro, like, is a leading problem.
And now we're gonna send kids home.
And now we're saying, no, we're gonna send the kids who are most likely to have problems. And it's not like there's an easy solution, because if there was an easy solution, we would be doing that already. But it's, and I guarantee you tho- that those twenty-one kids have absentees hi- at probably higher rates.
Yeah.
Than that. So they have a regular absentee and then we're sending them home. And I think one of the goals that we should be focusing on is how do we, cause we know it's a small group of kids. What energy can we put into those kids that's different? And I know that's hard and I know there's not an actual, like, this is the answer.
Sure, sure, sure.
But they're like, doing the same, if we've been doing the same thing that we did when we started the merger and we're saying, we have twenty kids all the time. We gotta do something different.
I think the, and, and I hear you a hundred percent. Uh, I think the, the one piece of this that I think makes me hopeful is that that eighty-nine never came back.
Yeah.
So I, it's problematic that we still have this percentage of students who are struggling. But thank goodness we're not sending them home as much as we used to. Um, I think the work of, of restorative practice is to address a behavior in a, in a, I think in a meaningful way. You know, not just to say, hey, don't do that again. We're not gonna suspend you because we want our suspension numbers to go down. But to actually work with the student in a meaningful way that they can repair relationships and, and, uh, make up for what they've done. Uh, that takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. Personnel, again, I'm sounding like a broken record. We've got somebody who we're hiring short-term grant funding to try and shore up, uh, our systems there, just to have more capacity, have more people to have those conversations. Uh, it's really easy to say to a student, you did this three days. It's really hard to say, you did this, now let's do the tough work of, of figuring it out and not three-day suspension. Um, but that's the commitment we have to make. We have to. Adrian?
We, we've said at multiple meetings that what we wanna see in the school is the only kids held out are the kids who have presented some kind of a dangerous situation.
Yep.
Either to another student or to them, you know, or to the school.
Yep.
We won't do out-of-school suspensions. We have yet to actually finance that, that goal.
Sure.
You know, cause you need somebody in-house who can watch those kids because having an out-of-school suspension is, everybody knows, and as I, you know, been on my little soapbox multiple times, is just unhelpful. It doesn't catch kids up. It allows them to fall further behind when they fall further behind. They don't wanna participate because they feel stupid. You know, they don't understand what's going on in class. And we have the perfect opportunity, if we have a two-day suspension, to have hands on that kid in a classroom, catching him or her up in all of her classes or their classes. And I just, I, I know I've been on the finance committee, I've been part of the cutting of that person in multiple years, but really, I mean, these numbers aren't going down, so we need to fin- finance that position. And we just can't keep talking about it. We need to do it.
And just to be brief, I agree with Adrian a hundred and ten percent. If you have an in-school suspension person, there's lots of ways you can utilize that. You can catch kids up and, and you don't necessarily have to say it's an in-school suspension. The, the student who's having a bad day, um, you know, and you know at some point during the day is gonna lose it. I, I. I, I had kids who would actually, who didn't mind going to in-school suspension because they had to do the schoolwork.
They, they knew that's what they needed.
Yeah, and the in-school suspension was, I mean, they didn't get to eat lunch in the cafeteria. The bathroom was there, water was there. They went down before lunches, got their lunch, went back up. I mean, they were there for the day and they could get a lot of work done.
Absolutely. Liz? Oh, you're muted still, Liz.
To Lynn's point, do we have flexible pathways person?
No, that, that is our guidance department and our administration. We do not have a position that does that.
Thank you.
Yep. Youth Risk Behavior Survey is tricky. It only happens every two years, which is challenging. And they have not released their data yet. So we do not have an update 2021. So I checked that yesterday and that has not come out yet. So I cannot tell you how we're doing there, unfortunately.
I also think, like, because when we were talking, when we were putting these numbers in, one, that we, this was like one of the softest places, we didn't have a clue. And then there's also just the fact that if you're sitting in a classroom taking a risk assessment survey, you are not going to answer 100%, honestly.
Yeah, fair enough.
It's like, we're bad at just taking surveys in general. And like, it, so I think we always have to take these numbers with a, with a big buffer.
And I would recommend we start thinking about what can we do locally and not be beholden to another group that, you know, is only going to give us data every other year and it might be late. I think there are ways we can try and track this ourselves and maybe in more meaningful ways. Oops. Community. We've been having this conversation around a comprehensive professional survey. And we're absolutely continuing to move on that and we'll be giving that annually, absolutely. We've also discussed several times the need to engage the community around strategic planning. And I think that's another piece of it, too. Surveying folks and seeing if they're happy or not, I think, is important. Asking people what they want, I think, is even more important. If we know they're upset and they don't like what's going on, fine. But what do we, what do they want? I think that's got to be part of our strategic planning as we think about what our goals are. If, in other words, if we set a goal that all of our students are going to be certified plumbers when they graduate, a lot of people are going to be really happy. There are probably going to be some people who say that makes no sense. Be great for the economy, great as far as job market goes, right? But does every kid want to be a plumber? Does that make sense for every kid? If we don't know what our community wants, I think it's hard for us to decide, well, this is what every kid needs. I think we need that input to set those goals, if that makes sense. Human resources. So some of this data I have, there's one piece I don't. Employee retention data I've got, following the page there, that's got the goals on it. You can see that we've carried approximately the same number of total employees for the last four years. You can see that resignations have held roughly about the same from year to year. You can see terminations maybe fluctuate from year to year. You can see retirements are about consistent, too, from year to year. One thing that I think is interesting when you look at those numbers, those resignations tend not to be teachers. We're counting all of our employees in that 195. So if we lose 15 employees, 11 of those might be support staff, if that makes sense. Something that I think is interesting is we, we always have a trend of support staff being short-term employees. Coral might, might be able to speak to this later.
Are our coaches?
Coaches are not counted in that. Coaches are not. So when I ask Ann for this information, it's really, who are our regular employees? Who are our people on contract? So if we have some interesting point-to-position here or there, we really just look for our regular contracted employees. So that's a great question. So coaches wouldn't cause that fluctuation. But Coral will likely be bringing a lot of paraeducators to the next personnel meeting for hire. Because we always have a handful of paras that leave at the end of the year and we always have to rehire some. You could, you could take bets on why that is. I think we don't pay a lot for that work. I think that's part of it. So it tends to be something that people don't do forever. But that has held fairly consistently for the last four years, those numbers. New teacher retention, little different way of looking at that. This is only teachers and this is only new teachers. So 17, 18 year, nine of the 11 people we hired 17, 18 are still here. Eight of the people we hired 18, 19 are still here. So those two years have met that target. So new folks that joined us there. Great question about what happened 19, 20 and 2021. One thing you could maybe notice is I think resignations are the big shift in the 19, 20, 20, 21 year. I think when you only hire eight, again, like we were talking Tinmouth, Shrewsbury, when, when you only hire eight, a couple leave, the percentage shifts a lot faster than when you're hiring 12. I, I wonder if those were just really challenging years with the pandemic, too. If you were new during that pandemic year, that's all anecdotal. Those are guesses. I'm not telling you that I know why that is. 19, 20 and 2021, we are not going to meet that goal.
I have a question on F.
Yes.
On your back page.
Yes.
That concerns me.
Yep. Oh, teacher daily attendance rates?
Yeah.
Yep. That one I don't have for you. And I'll tell you why. Because I thought it would be easy enough to get because I can get teacher attendance, right? Great, wonderful. And then I started finding out that the numbers looked terrible because when people retire, they cash in days. Will those go in as leave days? So there's a bunch of leave days that I don't know were retirement leave days necessarily. We have our wellness buyback that's in the contract. People cash in leave days for that. So I started noticing, why are there all these leave days at the end of the year for all these people? And I can't sort through that and weed out all of those myself, unfortunately. So that's completely my fault. In the past, we've asked our admin assistants for those numbers. They're not around all summer. So I will get you that as soon as I can get you that. And that's completely my fault. I thought I was going to be able to get that number myself with what I had in front of me, but I did not. So that's why I don't have that. Does it concern you just the goal itself or past data or?
You know, but now it makes sense. So it might not actually be 93 and 97% if we take out.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, you first look at it and it's like, 100% is not that far, you know, away from those. But then if you're counting in people buying back, leave time and stuff, technically, we might not be at that percentage.
Correct. And I would not count any of that in the number. I would not. I would only count absences where people really are out. I couldn't find that number myself, unfortunately. Finances, facilities is an easy one. Annual financial audits will consistently indicate solid internal controls and regulatory compliance with zero material findings. We continue to be there. We continue to have clean audits. Kudos to Stan and his team. Facilities, we have been continuing to move towards energy efficiency in all of those items. Equitable use of financial resources will provide all students opportunities for success. I can't report out on that because that's not a number. If you gave me a metric that you wanted, I could report out on that. The best I can tell you is that we, we have that in mind when we're making decisions. If you want a metric, then we can revise these goals and come up with a number, something to measure that.
It gives you as evidence by goals one and two. So you can justify your, you know, that using those. I don't think you need.
In, in theory, those other numbers would show positive trends.
Right. And I think that's all, that's all we meant when we wrote C.
Yep, fair enough.
The other thing that we talked about when we were working on all of the goals was, that was one of the things we actually wanted to talk about as a, like, as, at a retreat or something where we could say, okay, here's a goal that we're thinking about. What are, what is the administration's opinion of? What are targets are reasonable or things like that? And I think that's one of the things we were most wanting to come together with when we were doing this section was like, let's, let's make these things reasonable and attainable, but still striving.
And I think meaningful. That would be the one I'd add. I agree with all of that, but I think meaningful. Not that these aren't, but.
Yeah, exactly.
Other, other thoughts, questions, comments, Lynn? Okay, sorry, I thought you were.
No, that was just me waving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
All right, so now retreat scheduling?
So speaking of that, retreat scheduling. And I really think while we've been talking about scheduling to talk about strategic planning, I think it goes hand in hand with this. Our, our goals have to line up with that planning. We need to know what the community wants from our schools and that should inform, I think, what's meaningful. That adds the meaningful piece. How do we want to go about trying to schedule something? I know summer is tough. It became clear pretty quickly that summer folks aren't quite as available as they might be during the year.
Yeah, I don't know exactly who's in the room. So how many people are we even missing before we can have this conversation? Just Sam and?
Two, three.
Three, are we missing three?
Three.
Three.
So Matt, Sam?
Matt, Bruce, Sam.
And Bruce.
And Bruce, yeah, Bruce is just after another week or so. Don't know.
Summer is just, I mean, just summer's hard. I mean, July, the month of July, like, you figure everybody, that's the middle of summer with their children. And I think if we keep saying, oh, we'll push it to August, our August is going to look horrid.
Crazy, yep.
Because we keep saying, oh, we'll do it in August, we'll do it in August. So I'm thinking, and I know it needs to be done, but maybe almost, you know, middle of September, get things calmed down in school, flow type thing, and then we can sit, almost breathe and try to get it taken care of.
My, my input is that strategic planning is something that's going to take us a year if we're really going to do it properly and get all the input we need. With that said, I, I'm comfortable with whenever we want to start.
Josh, go ahead.
When, when are you going to do those surveys?
Good question. Probably sometime in the fall.
Because, I mean, we're talking about lining up with what the community wants.
Yep.
Well, until we're sure or get some input from, of what the community wants.
And really good question. I'd like to do two things. Survey is fantastic, that's great. And that'll do a lot for us. If I can sit down with a building principal and say, the, the community that, that sends students to your building has these things they're concerned about, we can fix that at that building. That's huge, that's important. For, for the board goals, I think that's good information. But I would like to have some meetings where we pull people in, you know, 20 people at a time. And we run a focus group meeting where we say, hey, what, what's, you know, what do you want from our schools? When your kid graduates, what do you, what do you expect them to have? What do you want them to be? And I don't think a survey can capture that.
I know.
I think it's got to be some in-person engagement with people. And that's why I say it's got to take a year to do it properly. You can't do it with 200 people. So I, I would envision a bunch of small meetings where we're pulling principals in to, to support. I'm engaging, board members are engaging. You know, we can run some groups and we can schedule that out and we can get as many people in that want to come in and we can have those conversations.
Yeah.
Liz?
I unmuted myself this time. So just Brian or everybody, are we thinking like one Saturday morning a month? We do like, you know, open invite, the first 20 respondents should, you know, are invited to come have a conversation with us. We can give breakfast in the conference room or coffee and, and have these conversations. Even do, you know, it could be like a board member and like a group of more people. Or, you know, it doesn't have to be, or we could do breakouts. I don't know what, like, do we have any vision? Do folks have thoughts as to what this might look like?
I think that's.
I'm really thinking that it's more directed than just getting together with people or moving with, hey, look, you know, we need to have topics that they're discussing with choices that they're given.
And I think.
Just get.
I think that's out of the purview of what we're doing now. I think that's a lot to be figured out and why we need to set some time to do it. You know, we're, we're, it's a great question, Liz, but I don't know that we're going to answer it tonight. Does that make sense? I think we need to spend a.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm trying to, you know, have my brain take shape of, you know, take shape, make shape of what it is, you know, where we're going with this. So maybe what's, so the end goal is to find out from our community members what they want to see. So, you know, I believe in the backwards by design planning model. So, you know, maybe it does make sense to do, if folks aren't opposed to that, one Saturday a month where we're talking about, like, first Saturday, we're talking about, oh, come talk to us about this, this theme. You know, the next month, one Saturday a month, we talk about the second goal, that sort of thing.
I, I think we need, I think we need an hour as a group to sit down and that's our only thing to hash out is how are we approaching, yeah, how are we approaching strategic planning?
Have time before.
But when are we going to do that? That's the big question.
Do we have time before a board meeting at some point, like the beginning of September?
We could do it before a board meeting.
Instead of doing.
If that's easier to schedule.
Or if no one's opposed to it, we could also all think about it and come back and give our own proposal. I mean, I've done this kind of work, so I have ideas.
It could, if you think we could do a half hour, we could schedule it in a board meeting. If it's going to take longer than a half hour, we could do it opposing personnel meeting because personnel's at six, one meeting of the month. And we could meet six, you know, that's how we did our bylaws.
I think we need to do that.
You know, six o'clock on two Wednesdays.
Yep.
Josh, do you have?
Oh, I, the, the, I think the only, really, we were talking about this summer because one of the things when we were hiring was, we want to give him a good opportunity to start. And we want to make sure that as a board, we understand what the administration needs for just, like, getting going for the year. And so as long as you're comfortable.
I'm comfortable with that happening.
Dealing with that, then that's, then that's fine. And then I think having an hour before a board meeting to say, to give us homework, to say, this is what we have to think about and then, and plan it out for, for a long period of time. I just want to make sure that, you know, one of the things that community members wanted to make sure of if we were hiring, you know, if we were hiring, was that we were going to be able to get things accomplished and move forward. And so I just want everybody to be able to succeed, you know?
I think now that bylaws are over, it's a perfect opportunity to take that six o'clock once a month before that board meeting and at least have a meeting in August about what we want to see. And that'll give us an hour before, so that'll give us an hour before the board meeting. And then we can start to look at how are we planning it with the community.
So August 17th?
What, you're usually the first one?
Correct.
So, yeah, it would be that meeting.
And I, I think, and again, this is just my opinion, but I think it's very difficult to have a meeting where. and again, this is just my opinion, but I think it's very difficult to have a meeting where every board member is going to be present.
Sure.
And everyone, yes.
So, no, no, I just.
No, yeah.
And I understand that. So, I think if we're looking at starting the planning process, if there's one or two board members missing, I think you're still okay.
I think we were looking at only having three or four, and I feel like that wasn't enough. If we're missing three, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I think that's why you strive for quorum, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we weren't looking like we'd even have that.
So, are we all comfortable with saying on August 17th, we meet at six? And try to get a little bit of a handle on this? Since we're done with bylaws and stuff? All right, so we'll have that on there. Since I'm not hearing anything. BJ, you're up.
Okay. Doing this for the mics. And yep, I got the, which one's going to turn around? There we go.
I was going to say, it'll move to you.
I am loving the new setup there for Peck TV, that's really cool, so. Hi, everybody.
BJ.
Been interesting to be on this side of the table. So I have submitted two bids for basically a big summer order. I'll start off with a little bit easier one, and that is Chromebooks. Still new, I walked around to all the principals and asked them what they needed to be up to date with Chromebooks. There's a lot of elementary schools that still have some Macs, especially the younger ones, which takes up the majority of the Chromebooks that are available on here. At the high school, we had just barely enough Chromebooks to give to students and no spares or anything to switch out for any issues, and that is a, well, we're running a one-to-one, so that is a common thing that we'll be seeing. So, I have a Chromebook fund. We are lucky enough that there is some funding within the ESAR grant to, for, specifically for student devices, which is good this year. May help next year, but we will have to talk about making sure that replacement schedule is in the budget. So, the very, so the first one, which is, I'm asking to purchase 90 Chromebooks and their licenses using ESAR funds from Wally Computer Associates in a total amount of $26,880. The three companies I went with, I've worked with in the past, Brian's worked with them too. They are all roughly the same. I think Wally made the most effort to working with me and getting the pricing.
Connection really didn't make any effort.
Some vendors, some vendors do, and some vendors just don't.
It's like Connection really didn't make any effort.
Yeah.
I, to Connection's defense, they were the hardest ones for me to find who my account rep is, so they had the least amount of time to give me some updated numbers.
Can I, can I go ahead and make this motion, folks?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of 90 Chromebooks with their licenses from, is it Wally?
I always call it Wally, but it could be Wally.
Okay, Wally Computer Associates.
Yeah, they go by WCA quite a bit.
Okay, that's accurate.
For a second. Just to get this on going.
Okay. All in favor?
Discussion?
Um.
Oh, we need a discussion. Sorry. Any discussion?
I, I would just like to fill in, folks who are due to the board, so, we have not made an investment, and Brian can speak to this.
Yep.
BJ, you might be able to as well. We haven't made a, an investment in our technology resources in a couple of years, in part because of COVID.
We struggled to purchase the computers we needed, and we bought a lot of parts to keep them running, so we are playing catch-up.
Yeah.
Playing catch-up and really utilizing these ESAR funds.
Well, no, we've, we've used the ESAR funds a good bit. We've tried to draw down everything we could, and we did make some computer purchases from ESAR funds in the past. We got what we could.
Great.
Some, a conversation that Brian and I have been having is like a different approach to how technology has been purchased. Largely because of COVID and other factors, Brian has spent a lot of time fixing as needed. Something you're going to hear from me even in this next bid is, I'm going to spend a lot of time, I guess, with the finance committee, with Brian on my own thing, trying to come up with a really strong replacement schedule. And so that when I come to you and says, here's the money I need on a year-to-year basis, here's exactly how we can go, so that students have, you know, student devices aren't six or seven years old, teachers aren't using 12-year-old devices and projectors. So I'm going to be looking at that from student devices, teacher and staff devices, and also infrastructure like servers and stuff are all going to be things I'm going to be looking at, hopefully before budget season comes to play.
We've consistently cut tech budget over the last seven years.
Yeah.
Sometimes big, sometimes small, but pretty consistently we've given up a little every time.
We have, and I think ESAR is saving me right this year because I can buy some student devices, which has allowed me to produce the next bid, but that is, I think, a short-term solution to a long-term problem. Did you want to call a vote? Any other questions or?
I'll have a vote. Um, all in favor of this motion? And it's unanimous?
Thank you. The next bid, I put a little bit more information in, and something you want to hear, I will talk about a learning space. And for me, a learning space is any time that, any place that learning really happens. This room is a pseudo-learning space, so hopefully it'll get some.
You're saying we're not learning now, BJ?
I say we're learning. I'm trying to define the whole, who's the student?
Careful what you're saying.
But, in other words, I'm trying to figure out a way to get the, justify me through this to buy the extra TV for the room here. But, one of the things I have talked about, I walked around, and one of the things that I am seeing that is aging the most is our projection systems, whether it be the projector, and definitely, there's not many interactive smartboards that, the interactive smartboard generation is kind of old. And even the devices, I had several teachers like, oh, we got all those one-to-one Macs and all those mini Macs. That was how many years ago?
If things, if things were still working, they kept working.
Yeah, so there's a lot of teacher technology that is aging quite a bit. To that regard, one of the newer technologies is interactive TVs. They offer a much brighter viewing, so teachers can, or students can actually see what's going on. The interactivity is much more stable and usable. It is a technology that many schools in the area have been exploring and bringing in instead of buying new projectors. And what I have asked to do is I wanted to buy one interactive projector per building. And so I've put together five interactive projectors. I have quotes for two different models. Wally was highly suggesting the ClearTouch ones, which came in a little bit cheaper. Some of the other systems were coming, looking at New Line. There are two different ones. On the school IT list, other schools have recommended both of those. And I did some demoing with both of them, and I couldn't really find where one was more advantageous than the other in terms of features. I mean, there's a couple little quirks here and there, but not anything mind-blowing, like, oh my goodness, that's worth an extra $1,000 type of a deal. Also on here beyond the interactive board, because I have not had that many experiences with the school systems here, and I'm actually relying on the principals, which many of them are either new or new to their position, they're still building their relationships. I've also bought stands for these. I'm hoping that eventually they may become permanently on the wall, but until we know exactly where they're going, and then principals can tell me where they would go, I decided to make them a little bit more modular. So I have stands. Chromebook licenses, you'll notice that I have quite a few more Chromebook licenses than what I'm even buying here. We have a stash of 31 Chromebooks sitting here in a boxes that we can't use because we don't have the licenses to use them.
Where did those come from?
Grant-funded, and the trickiness with the grant is, if the grant is for devices, you can't buy the licenses. So those were ones that we purchased knowing we were going to need them at some point in time.
Does that affect my other bid then?
No, we're, well, we can, we can do the paperwork appropriately.
Okay. So, and what those devices are going to be for, because I don't know, I don't, they didn't have any stickers, and everybody told me they were just purchased. Along with the 15 other Chromebook X360s that I had on there are going to be to cover the PARAs, because there was talk to support the PARAs with having Chromebooks. That's all fine and dandy. We have around 50 PARAs that need Chromebooks to cover that. So we're using the ones that we have in our closet plus a few extras to get to be able to cover that. The last one in here is actually, I wish I had it with me, my version has not come in yet. I'm working on trying to get, replacing teacher devices, and I'm really going to be exploring with getting Chromebooks. So I'm looking at a more premium Chromebook for teachers. I will be using it as my primary device once it comes in. I've talked to Kristen Simonetti and Jane, who also need new devices. They agreed as administrators to kind of live in that Chromebook realm. I'm a big fan of, if we ask our students, I expect the same out of myself. The Chromebook is going to be a little bit more, it's going to have a very MacBook-esque feel in terms of a hard shell, sleek design, but in terms of features, it's going to be touch-capable. And the one I'm looking at also has a built-in stylus that is embedded in the device itself, so you can pull it out, you can be using it. Teachers can flip it over and actually do interactivity from walking around the room while they're projecting. I'll be doing some training around that, but that is the other device on this bid. Or, yeah, I guess it is request. Again, Wally worked with me. They were the ones that worked hard to set up some demos, they were the ones that worked hard to get me some really good pricing. The majority of the pricing difference comes in the fact that the ClearTouch model that they're producing came in cheaper, almost $1,000 cheaper than the New Line equivalents. I would like to stay with something that's, I didn't want to get, like, just a, it's not just a deal, it's a regular pricing, so I can plan that this might be the price next year when I go to buy them. Whereas, you know, some deals, oh, it's 50% off. Well, I want to plan for it not to be.
Can't budget on that.
So I wanted, I can get more boards if we go with the ClearTouch model moving forward. So that's one of the reasons why you'll see a big discrepancy in the pricing between these three bids, is that model difference. That said, my recommendation is to move forward with Wally Computer Associates, take advantage of their superior pricing for purchasing, I'm going to say, learning space devices plus a little bit extra in there.
If folks are ready, I'd be happy to make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Did we hear a number on that second bid?
Oh, yes. Wally came in at $29,140. The other two was 30, almost 37, and then another one came in just above 34. So for the three companies that I asked bids from.
So I just have a question on this one, and you do the mobile stand. Are you thinking that with the mobile stand, they can take it maybe room to room if they need to?
I'm hoping it'll find a permanent home in a classroom, whether that classroom teacher chooses to have it on a mobile stand so it can be moved where it needs to be.
Okay.
Without knowing exactly where it was going. I.
And you don't want to put one brand-new one on the wall in somebody's room who has great intentions but then never touches it. If it sits in that room for a month, somebody might go, oh, can I try it? So, to get it used initially.
Make it mobile for a while.
Yeah, I'd like to build a little bit of a relationship with the principal and with the teachers to where it would go, and have those conversations first, and maybe a mobile stand is the right place for it.
I mean, all else fails. We can always buy more mobile stands if that's the case, or just have mobile stands that we don't use for potential.
Correct, I mean, the, when we, we might look to later on down the line actually buy a few more of these. My goal here is to get one in each building so that when I can talk to a teacher about this, here's your future technology, here's how you use it, get that feedback, get that training ability in each of the buildings, is why I at least wanted one in each of the buildings without really knowing exactly which classroom it is. I will say that there is many, there is many needs to upgrade the projection systems and interactivity systems in every single school. I did do a walk-around, so I'm not worried about if it'll last in place. I think the bigger question is, who's the best representative in each school to be the initial user of it? And that's, like I said, with so many new principals, that's even hard.
Sort of just pause on that thought for a second. That's the one thing that caught me when you were talking, BJ, was the aging of all of our systems. When I hear five, seven, and 12-year-old technology, technology is growing extremely fast. Like, to use a bad example, when you buy a new house, you get a new refrigerator, a new washer, a new microwave, et cetera. It all seems to die at the same time. I would hate to think that all of our five-year-old or seven-year-old tech times several hundred pieces of equipment is about to go out. Seems to add up quite fast.
I don't think that's going to happen to us. I think what we've seen, you know, the oldest things we have are the projectors, and we've seen those slowly die over time, actually. So I, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think we have 10 projectors that are going to die next month. I don't. We've, we've been slowly replacing them. Yeah, I wish we could replace them faster, but I don't think we need to turn around tomorrow and spend $200,000 and replace everything. I think we've got a little time.
And I don't want to do that either, because for that exact situation, I mean, I really would not want every single device to be the same generation in the school, and that's why I'm going to work very hard to come up with a replacement schedule that includes students, that includes staff and infrastructure, and bring that through the budgeting process so you guys have a really clear idea.
Because with existing budget, it couldn't be done. It just, there's no way to do it.
And like I said, I have a little bit of a leeway because of, I'm able to buy student devices out of the ESAR funds, but that is a very limited thing, so.
And temporary.
Yeah, very, that's what I mean, temporary.
Lucky to have it, sure.
Yes, very.
It made it so I felt comfortable enough to bring this other one to the board and start making some infrastructure upgrades for teacher devices. I would not have been able to bring this to you if we didn't have ESAR funds.
BJ, are Chromebooks as sturdy as the MacBooks, as Adrian?
BJ, are those Chromebooks as sturdy as the MacBooks, as is Adrienne?
I would say yes, actually, they're designed, both are premium devices. Uh, the Chromebooks are lesser expensive than MacBooks, um, and easier to maintain and add more features. Uh, there is a learning curve with making sure that you're using a Chromebook to its best ability. So, um, and like I said, I'm starting off with ten, I'm gonna be living off of it too, so I will know every single struggle that I am asking of the teachers and the administrators that are using it.
That's great, thank you.
Those, those particular ones are going to be allocated to administrators, right?
Um, I have two administrators that have agreed to take them, I've, I'm buying one separately, and then I wanted one to go with every one of the boards. And then it's gonna leave like a two or three extras to hopefully work with a couple of the teachers who might be good about a early adopting that technology to use, give me feedback.
I'm just thinking of the cost differential between teachers and students, quantity-wise.
Yeah, I'm hoping my something in my experience, a rule of thumb is equity is about a hundred dollars a year. If I spend three hundred dollars on a device, I expect at least to get three years out of it. If I expect, spend six to seven hundred dollars on a device, I would want six to seven years. If we spend twelve hundred dollars on a Mac, I would get twelve, expect twelve years.
And I, you know, I've seen Macs go ten years, I've had a Mac for ten years, and if you maintain it, you know.
It can
Things, yeah, yeah, it can, if it gets super heavy use, replace the battery, you know, some things go on them, but, uh, you know. Yeah, if we're, if we're spending a thousand dollars on a Mac, then eight years is actually pretty reasonable. And we've seen them do okay for eight years.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be
Chromebooks for students, we can't go eight years on those, no way, yeah.
Um, they get, the amount of physical abuse these get from going home and back every day, open and close, is nowhere near
And we've been lucky, the HPs that we landed on, that, that, you know, from, from K on up to twelve, we're using HP models. They've been pretty durable and workhorses. Um, we've, we've kept them in a lot of places longer than we should have, uh, but we've been lucky, cause they've been, they've held out, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I have a vote? All in favor of accepting this bid? Uh, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you BJ.
More to hear, more to come, bud.
Nice job BJ.
Hey! Good job in your new role.
It's been fun.
Good.
I have an office here, so you can come visit me too when you're here. Doug's waved.
Yeah, BJ has hit the ground running, which is awesome.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, special education. I'm assuming that's Coral?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, your turn.
Absolutely.
Oh, good, okay, I was about to tell BJ to sign me up for those Chromebooks, because the mic on this one is not very reliable, and I had to do it earlier, so. Um, alright, good evening, everybody, um, I apologize now, I am the hottest room in the house. Um, my children are out in the living room in Antarctica, so hopefully I'll be coherent for this. Um, so this evening, I'm gonna talk to you about the outcome of the special education monitoring that took place this past year. That's, um, item number one, and then, um, when we get through that, I'm gonna talk with you about some, um, sort of hiring situation, so. We'll start with the, the, um, meteor topic, which is, um, monitoring. Uh, for those who, um, just have recently joined the board, or just don't know what I'm really talking about when I say monitoring, I'm just gonna give you the recap that um, because our district receives federal special education dollars through what's called the IDEA B grant. Um, we are required to be monitored, um, by the, the federal and state government to make sure that we are doing what we are supposed to be doing, um, in terms of serving kids with disabilities. So every couple of years, um, we get, uh, we go through a process where we are sort of checked in on and looked at by our state and federal government to make sure that we are in compliance fully with all of the rules and regulations that allow us to be the recipient of those funds. So I'm gonna talk to you tonight about how that went for us this year. Um, so this report is fairly hot off the press, um, though it actually, um, it, it isn't necessarily a final version, and I'll talk to you about why that is in a minute. Um, there are several basic, um, rules that we have to follow in the world of special education. We have to do things like hold IEP meetings once a year for every student on an IEP, have to do that. We have to make sure that we are conducting special ed evaluations within the timeframe that is spelled out in the law. Have to do that. Um, we have to make sure that we are conducting reevaluations every three years, um, under the conditions spelled out in the law. Uh, we have to make sure that our IEPs have certain components in them, have to. There's no, there's no room for negotiation on that, we have to make sure that um, our IEPs are, that each section is in compliance. Um, we also this year were monitored on, um, how, uh, you know, how well we're doing with serving, um, our youngest students, which is ages three, four, and five. Um, that population used to be called triple E or EEE, which stood for Early Essential Education. That label has now changed to Early Childhood Special Education, so we are monitored on um, you know, how we're, how we're, um, meeting those, the needs of that population, where we're meeting the needs, and there's a lot that goes into it. Um, and then the last area, um, that I have is, um, back in, I wanna say March or so, this board was asked to approve a new policy relating to special education. Basically, what you all agreed to adopt is that we agree as a district that we are gonna follow the, um, regulations that were provided to us by, um, the state, and there was a handbook that, that went with that. And so you created and adopted policy to memorialize our commitment to follow the rules. Uh, so we were monitored on that. Um, had this board not done that, we would not have passed that particular indicator that we were monitored on. Because you all were willing to, to take that action and get that done for us. We were fully in compliance relating to, uh, whether or not we have special ed policy, whether or not we have evaluation policy, whether or not we have discipline policy, so we have all that, so. Um, so you guys own that one, so nice job, we appreciate that you were able to get that done for us back in March or so. Um, this report was a little bit challenging because, um, this was our first year using this particular monitoring process. First time we've ever done it the way that we had to do it. It's the first time the AOE has ever used this particular monitoring process, so. Um, admittedly, it was cumbersome and challenging, um, and then to make matters just a little bit worse. Um, the software, the, you know, the upload system that we were all using, um, called SharePoint was like found to be ineffective for a number of reasons nearing the end of this process, and so we weren't even able to get into our folder to submit things, to receive things, we weren't able to see what we had done. What's that?
To even get the final report, took a month.
Yeah, so special ed is never dull, never boring, I promise you, um. So that issue that we had did, did not make it easy nor fun. Um, two areas of this report, um, nearly gave me a, a bit of a heart attack. Um, but there is a bit of a funny story if you're in the market for some humor. Um, we were required to submit hundreds of pages of scans to the AOE, and what I mean by scans is we were required to submit hundreds of pages of IEPs um, and different things like that, and when the scans were sent, they were sent either out of order or they didn't transmit at all. And so instead of our monitoring group reaching out and saying, hey, we got this file from you that's totally blank, what's up with that? They just marked us down as a zero percent compliant, which was really disappointing because you know, your state agency wants you to do well in monitoring, we wanna do well in monitoring. That seems like a pretty simple fix to just give us a call and say, hey, something's wrong with your file transmission, can you take a quick look? We got something from you that's totally blank. Instead, they did give us a zero. Um, now I'm happy to report, um, we were actually, um, a hundred percent in compliance, not zero with that, with one of the particular areas relating to evaluation dates and child find and these things that we were monitored on. But, um, because of the technical error with the way our scans were sent, um, I am gonna need to redo that entire upload, um, so hopefully with any luck by November, uh, we get a new one of these saying, hey, we got your scans this time and, and you're good. Um, so we take that stuff pretty seriously and, you know, I
And I would interject really quickly, as soon as we knew there were issues with the scans, Coral reached out and said, oh, hey, what can we do? And they told Coral, wait till November, you know, that's what November's for, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah, so, um, you know, and for what it's worth, I mean, special education's not easy, and I hammer my people pretty hard when it comes to compliance stuff, cause this is really the stuff that that can impact your funding and impact, um, you know, your delivery of services and stuff, and so compliance is something we do hammer pretty hard, so, um, you know, we're gonna get that corrected for them in the November submission that we will redo, and it, it just is what it is, but you know, at the end of the day, I'm concerned with, are we genuinely compliant or not, how are we doing? Um, and what we, what we have on our end is absolutely compliant, um. It's just disappointing that, that this particular process did not, um, you know, did not result in like our monitoring team giving us a call and saying, hey, just take a look at that, um. So, we did just fine, um, in terms of, you know, being in compliance with dates and things like that that we have to keep track of, we did just fine with, um, transition planning for, um, older children with disabilities. We did just fine with how we're serving our, um, again, our three, four, five-year-olds, um. And we did fine with, with whether or not we have, um, appropriate and up-to-date policies, so. That's really the long and short of this, um. Again, a cumbersome and, and slightly disappointing process overall, but um, it is what it is and we'll correct it, what we need to correct for the November round that's coming up, so.
And Coral, can you, can you speak to what are the implications? So there was the technical error and we have zero percent compliance in a, in one area. What are, what's actually the implication of that?
Um, there isn't one, we just have to resubmit new scans, and knowing that those are in compliance, there's no implication at all. Um, that's really it, we don't even have to do like technical assistance, which is basically like where the AOE says to you, hey, um, your district has got a struggle in this area, you need to do X, Y, and Z activities in order to remediate your deficiencies, we don't have to do that. So it's really just get new scans to them, um, and that's it, so. Yeah, yeah. How about other questions, if any, I'm, I'm happy to answer them, but that's kind of the long and short of where we're at with monitoring. Uh, Adrienne, I see your hand there.
I'm just impressed that you weathered through. I'm just
Yeah.
But that's been done, and I'm glad that you do it with, you know, care.
Yeah, we, we try, you know, it's so funny because, um, the issue with the scans is that, um, pages got out of order in the copier, and so that was one, they were just out of order, and so that when reviewers looked at them, they couldn't make sense of them, but yet if you just look at the page numbers on the bottom, they were, they were just out of order. Stupid, stupid thing, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right, and then a, a file upload issue, so. Um, but in terms of like genuine compliance, we were there, so that was good to see. I can't see if there's any hands, Brian, so if there are, I'll refer you to let me know.
We don't have any.
I think one last thing I'll mention, cause we were talking about this. The process, I think, is a good process to go through, while it's a pain in the rear end, I, I hear that, and lots of the data reporting and pieces we do are. But they're necessary because there was something where, uh, correct me if I'm wrong Coral, we were pulling certain paperwork and we went
Mm-hmm.
Oh, let's go on there.
This is, this is due in a month, we need to take care of this, and we nudged somebody to do something because it was gonna slip through the cracks. So I think there are some good things that do come of the process, while it is a huge, uh, amount of effort and time on Coral's end and her staff's end, so.
Yeah.
It's the only thing I'd share.
Yeah. Okay, um, the next item that I'm gonna just cover this evening, this is just kinda to give you the warning, um. So the board is maybe aware, um, we have had out there for many months now, a posting for a speech-language pathologist. Our district needs to have three full-time SLPs on its staff. We, we have to have that. Um, one of our SLPs, um, who was with us for a couple of years, she actually exited the district and is moving out of state. Um, they're really, really disappointed to see her go. Um, but we did post her position right away, like the day we found out that she would be leading us. Um, to date, I mean, I just checked SchoolSpring right before this, there are whopping zero applicants for, for that position. Um, SLP positions are funny. Uh, we have had years where we've had so many great candidates that it was gut-wrenching to try to choose one, we wanted to like hire them all. Um, and then we've had years like this where we just sat at zero, and that's where we're at. Um, last year in July or so, I think I came to the board and said, hey, we're down a special educator and I need your help. Um, and we ended up, um, contracting with a remote services company called VocroVision. And we basically paid that company to find us a special educator who provided services to our students remotely. I'm back in front of you once again, a year later, to tell you, I suspect we are going down that road again for a speech-language pathologist. Um, I absolutely hate doing that, um, number one, it costs. There's a cost, and it's more than it would be, um, if we had a, just a full-time position of our own. Um, also, you know, um, remote services can be great, they really can be. It's just that an in-person delivery tends to be much better for the population of children, um, that we have, it just does. Um, so, you know, in the event between now and let's say the middle of August, if a candidate were to apply, you know, we would aggressively try to interview and, and, and attract and recruit and do all of that, but I'm, I'm not very optimistic at this point, I haven't been for, for a while. Though, you know, I'm not here to get a motion or anything, I'm certainly here to hear your ideas and your input, but really, I just wanna put you on notice that I do suspect that I'm gonna be back to you in probably a couple of weeks saying gonna need a motion to approve one of these contracts. Um, in the meantime, though, the other part of that is that we do have a um, I'm not gonna share the name this evening, it hasn't gone through personnel or anything, so it'd be premature for me to do that, but we do have a, um, person. Uh, it'll be a name you recognize, who is interested in assisting the district with conducting speech-language evaluations, which is wonderful, um, that person is interested in helping us out up to ten hours per week. So the good thing about that is, you know, that can work for us, we can use that person to at least do the testing we need done. And then if we had to go the route of using a remote contract company, we could use those people to just do, um, services, so. That's kind of where we're at right now, um, Liz, I just saw your hand go up there, so.
Yeah, hi Coral, nicest of you.
You too, yeah.
Thank you for all of this. Um, so my question is, so we need three, we're looking for one, is that the question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Okay, it sounds like we might have someone who could offer up to 10 hours. I'm just wondering, with those remaining, would it be 30 hours?
No, not necessar- maybe. It's really tough to say. Um, what I do is, is I try to keep the services that the remote company provides to a minimum, cause they're expensive. So I don't, not sure what we'd be looking at. Probably something like that, maybe even a little less.
Okay, so basically my questions are, um, could we, and I don't know if we could, but do stipended overloads for our two SLPs? I don't know if that would work. I know, like, I once had the opportunity, um, we had a, uh, a mid-year situation where I had to cover, well, I had another teacher, had to cover another teacher's classes and we, we were stipended for overloads and, um, you know, we had the opportunity to decline that because it's, it's really a tremendous amount of work. Um, but, uh, so I'm wondering if, if we could do stipend overloads or and, and/or, um, if there is anyone on staff who would be willing to be, to begin, um, or who has any SLP background to do, to like get an emergency license or begin the process of getting an additional licensure? Just, I'm wondering these things.
Yeah, so it's all about compliance at the end of the day. Um, and so the stipend option, you know, stipends are great if you're asking an SLP to pick up like a kid after school or a kid here or there during the day. But unfortunately, we have to remain in compliance with our IEPs and how they're written. So you can't exceed certain group sizes, um, things like that. Um, the other thing is our SLPs are max capacity. I cannot even tell you the number of kids that the district has placed on IEPs that have speech language needs, especially since COVID. Um, so I cannot even begin, I could never like even see it as feasible that, that our folks could even pick up even, you know, a group of five or something like that during the day would just be an impossibility. But, that said, um, I definitely do have people that are always willing to like pick up a kiddo after school for a little bit of extra money or something like that. But at the end of the day, it doesn't really put a dent in, in the needs necessarily. Um, but then related to your second question, like, hey, do you have anybody in the pipeline that, um, you know, has experience or might be, might be prepping for licensure or something? So here's the fascinating thing about being an educational speech language pathologist. Um, it's a bit like being a doctor. You have to hold actually two licenses. There's a state level license and then there's one through the national organization, which is ASHA. It's the Association of, I think, speech and hearing or something like that. Um, our folks have to be dual licensed and they cannot provide services unless they've gone through a clinical fellowship. So, um, S, be, actually, being an SLP is actually one of the more restrictive in terms of what you're allowed to do. Like, we can, we can finagle certain things like with a special educator or an occupational therapist, but an SLP is hands-off. You don't, you don't mess around with that. Um, we do have a person in the district who has a bachelor's in communication sciences, but that person is not a teacher, is not a licensed educator. That individual could be, um, allocated to support the delivery of speech language services, but that person is still not an SLP and would not be out for like a provisional license or anything like that. So it's, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for all of that.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my last question is, is, um, have we reached out? I know, so just so everybody knows, this is a problem everywhere. Like a lot, um, districts are having a lot of problems hiring a lot of physicians.
Yeah.
And so I'm just wondering, um, have we reached out to, uh, recently retired SLPs that we might know in the community to say?
Well, that's how we got the, that's how we got the one.
That's the 10 hours.
That might go on a break. That's how we got the one that's, one wanted to come back here, 10 hours.
Gotcha.
Um, and I think, I've been pretty lucky over the years because I have been able to just maintain some relationships with like private SLPs that are always willing to like come in and help me out kind of when I need it. Like they're sort of like on speed dial. Um, one of those people is like fully retired. She's like, nope, I'm done. Nope, uh, don't call. Um, and then the others just have had drastic increases in their own caseloads and so they are feeling pretty limited in terms of their availability and they want to be with their families and stuff. So, yeah, it's hit or miss. But we do have, you know, we do have contacts on a couple of people that have helped me out when I'm in a bind, um, in the past and we keep in touch with them definitely, so.
So much.
It's crazy. It's so crazy.
Hold on. I think Nick's got a question, Coral.
Yes, Nick.
That one?
Just, Ethan's just talked.
Way over there. Uh, hi Coral, good to see you.
Hey, you too.
Been a while. Um, so-
Been a long time.
Um, you answered most of my questions, but, um, have we considered, and this may be answered by anyone, um, like a job recruiting type thing for, for this SLP?
So believe it or not, Nick, when I'm talking about like a remote service provider, that's kind of what that is. Um, what they do, these are like nationally-based firms that put out calls and, you know, uh, requests for assistance and they'll say, you know, does anybody want to serve schools in Vermont? You know, and they'll get back, you know, 50,000 hits or, you know, whatever they get.
But, but they're still remote, right? It's not-
They're always still remote, yeah.
It's not the, hey, I want to move to Vermont.
It's not that. Um, it is not that at all. However, when we have engaged with some of these companies before, they do seek out people that might be interested in that, just not a ton of people wanting to move into Vermont necessarily. Um, especially with our issue with the two licenses, cause we're one of the only states that requires that.
Yeah, and I know hiring in general right now, over the last 18 months, has just been terrible.
Awful, yep. And I'll get like, you know, Brian and I were talking, like, we'll get emails all the time, like, from, from companies that we don't know that are like, hey, are you looking for so-and-so? We've got someone, you know, in, in Taiwan or in the Philippines or something like that. Um, but those, those leads don't tend to pan out well. They're often more scams than, than anything. So you gotta be, you want to be kind of choosy and it's like, how many man-hours do you want to put into something that turns out to be a total scam?
Well, I've, I've seen similar ones Midwest. I've seen similar ones Midwest, but they don't want to move. They just want to, I'm going to work my time, but I, I physically need you here.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, and so that's why I prefaced it always with saying like, hey, if a candidate did apply, you know, that could be in person, that's, that's the route we want to go.
And, you know, and interesting that frequently we see out-of-state applicants too. We do, for even just an English position. You know, SLP, we've got nothing, no bites. Um, the VSA, Vermont Superintendent Association called a special meeting this Thursday to talk just about, uh, staffing shortages. You know, we're lucky that we're not quite where other people are. Um, it is too bad we can't find that one SLP and one more special educator.
Yeah, yep. Um, yeah, but no, Nick, back to your question, um, you know, when we put this posting out back in, I was, it may have been, I can't remember how far back it was. Months are blurred, but it's been months. I know that, um, I've been kind of keeping my eye just wide open and like talking to people and just trying to pull in whatever kind of connections or leads I can get. Uh, and they've just all been such dead ends for this, um, which is too bad. I also do have connections like at the hospital, you know, because they have clinically-based speech language pathologists. Um, but, um, their folks are all like full-time employed or, or whatever too. And so, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough. It's tough because the speech language caseload is the one that like is, it just grows exponentially. Um, that's especially since COVID. Um, that's one of the things that we're seeing is that kids are presenting with remarkably delayed language and speech since COVID. Um, because those kids didn't get a chance to play or socialize or interact or do the, you know, developmental types of language activities that we needed. So that caseload just is, is an exponential growth. Yeah. So yeah, that's, that's where I'm at tonight is just to sort of give you the, the unviable warning that I might be back. Um, but that's kind of where we are, um, with that particular position at this moment.
Well, please keep us updated.
Yep, yeah.
Definitely let us know if you need to be put on the agenda again.
Sure will, yeah.
You know, and if we can do anything to help out with it.
Yeah, absolutely Andrea, for sure, yeah. Uh, I think, just to give you a heads up, I, I'm in the process now of just starting to get quotes from some of these companies, just so that I can come back to you and say, hey, this is what we're looking at for a figure. Um, just so we have that ready to go. I don't want to, I don't want to be looking for someone the first week in September. So it seemed like it was a proactive time to start reaching out and at least gathering the quotes so we know what we're talking about for money.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Now go to the ice box so you can, you know.
Yeah, I kick those kids out of living room. They're in there with their sweatshirts and blankets.
Um, all right, so on to committees. Negotiations. Adrian, is that you?
Um, it is. I, I think, I mean, unless-
Are we pretty much done?
We don't need to have that on the, um, agenda going forward.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, it's been there for years. We finally have a couple of years contract signed, so we-
On schedule, yeah.
Okay. Um, Len?
What?
Go ahead. You're up.
Okay, um, we have, we met tonight and we have several contracts that we need to approve. So bear with me. Um, the first one is a contract with Joanna Marenoff as a K through 12 nurse, 1.0 full-time equivalency. This is a grant-funded position and it's for one year.
Correct.
So I would make a motion to offer a contract to Joanna Marenoff. Thank you. Uh, discussion? Any questions? Okay? Everybody okay?
Yep.
All in favor? Okay? Thank you. To continue. Um, next one is offer a contract to Carlton Phil Hall um, as a K-12 district level, in, in K-12 district level support roles. Uh, that's a 1.0 full-time equivalency. Is that through Esser Funds, Brian?
Yes, it is as well. One-year contract.
One-year contract.
And that's focused on behavior support.
Right. I think Brian mentioned that earlier when he said we'd be bringing someone up that was going to be working with the discipline stuff. Um, so that would be Phil Hall. So I'd make a motion to approve a contract for Phil Hall.
Second.
Thank you, Liz. Discussion?
What's the job description here more specifically?
This is a person who's going to work at the district level and say there are some students with challenging behaviors at Wallingford. They would go and they would work with the Wallingford team for a week, get a plan in place, help folks start that plan going. Then they'd maybe go to Clarendon for a week and support a team at Clarendon. So, uh, and then, you know, week later, check back and see how the Wallingford team's doing. Maybe there's some students at the high school having a problems. This person would come up to the high school and do that same kind of work. So it'd be somebody who can help people to, to, you know, observe the behavior in the classroom, help write a plan and help somebody follow the plan. So supporting our, our teachers in the classroom, number one. And then supporting administrators with restorative practices, number two. So if the kid does keep getting sent out, how do we help our administrators deal with that?
This is to help our 21 from early.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
And, and it, again, one of the, the ideas here is to help, uh, reduce out-of-school suspensions. That's part of this process. So, um, vote, yes, let's. Uh, all those in favor of a contract, to offer a contract to Carlton Hall?
Great, unanimous.
Okay. Next. Um, uh, offer a contract to Mary Holman as K through 12 music teacher, 1.0 full-time equivalency. And again, just to give you some background here, um, Kristen Simonetti, who is working up in Shrewsbury as the principal, she was the music teacher here. And so we needed to fill, she still has some classes here, but there are some that need to be taught here and in Shrewsbury, right?
Yeah, our, our part-time Shrewsbury music teacher left this year. So Kristen's piece that she's not doing because she's principal and then the Shrewsbury piece make a full-time position.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we offer a contract to Mary Holman. Second.
Thank you, Paul.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, next is, um, a letter of employment for support staff in the central office to be offered to Christina Sweet. Christina is going to perform the duties of coordinator for the tooth tutor program at the high school.
Uh, probably just elementaries.
Oh, okay. Oh yeah, this is the district. Okay, never mind, sorry. Um, it will be at an hourly rate of $43, not to exceed 60 hours total for the year. And this posi- position is contingent upon receipt of Medicaid EPSDT funds. Anything you want to add to that, Brian?
Something we've done in the past, but we couldn't find the staffing for it. So we're able to find the staffing again. So, Health Office is hugely supportive of it.
And Christina actually worked in this district previously.
Yep.
So I will make a motion to offer a letter of employment to Christina Sweet.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next is a letter of employment for the site director of the after-school program. This would be offered to Alice Coats Martin. She would be .6 full-time equivalency at Clarendon Elementary and .4 full-time equivalency at Shrewsbury Mountain. She has been working at Shrewsbury.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, Brian?
Yep, this year.
And, and then Clarendon person has left.
Yep.
So she would be doing both programs.
Mm-hmm.
So I would make a motion to approve a letter of employment for Alice Coats Martin.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor?
You're good.
Opposed? Okay, next. We have a stipend payment letter for Brittany Blanchard, who would be taking on the position of elementary athletic director. Um, so I would make a motion to approve the stipend payment letter for Brittany Blanchard.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Can we have her, when she gets established, can we have her come with Kim?
Absolutely.
And explain what she's doing?
Absolutely. Former Mill River student athlete.
Yep.
I'm excited, yes. I've only been asking for that for a while.
I know. So we got that approved.
I was gonna say. Leave and everything happens.
Uh, the last thing, well-
We haven't voted.
We haven't voted.
Oh, okay, all those in favor, sorry.
We're all excited.
Trying to speed up the process. Uh, the next.
Let's go, give me go.
Yeah, the next item, um, up a bit, no. The next item is the fall high school and middle school coaches. And we, Kim sent a list of the sports and the coaches, the vast majority of whom are returnees from past. And so what I would like, and we discussed it in personnel, and it was suggested that I make a motion to approve all of them in the same motion, um, rather than going through each contract individually. So I will make that motion to approve the high school, the fall high school and middle school coaches. Contracts. Okay?
Second that.
Well. Hold it.
Hold it.
Yeah, I see, I got my hearing aids, and I can hear stuff now.
Oh my god, you have hearing aids. Whole world's changing.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Last.
Put it on, please.
We'd like to, I'd like to offer a two-year administrator's contract to Timothy Hart for the position of Director of Operations Buildings and Grounds. So I would make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Do, do you wanna talk a little bit about process briefly, and then Tim's here? If, if Tim wants to introduce himself, 'cause we'll all get to know him pretty, pretty well here.
Um, the way it worked is, um, Brian and Gary and I, uh, went over the applications, and got down to four, and then, um, then we scheduled interviews with Brian, Doug, uh, Nicole Peterson.
Wanda Stiles.
Is the, uh, transportation coordinator, thank you. And Wanda.
Stiles.
Who is in charge of the night custodial staff. And so, we went through the interviews, and based on everybody's opinion, we were convinced that Tim would be the best person for the position.
Uh, it, it was, I think, a pretty easy decision, um, after the group had the conversation. Uh, it seemed like Tim was gonna be a really good fit.
So I would make a motion, any other discussion?
Um, his contract starts September twelfth?
Correct.
When is Gary done?
Right before that.
The eleven.
September ninth.
So we have no overlap of training with Gary?
There.
We get a little bit, I think.
We will talk and we'll see if it's possible.
Okay.
And if it's possible, we'll figure out time sheets or things like that, but yeah. Um, technically, it starts when Gary's gone.
So technically, could we have Tim shadow a couple days?
And that'll be a conversation we can have, and figure out if something's feasible, what works and timing and things like that, yeah.
That way we don't throw you to the wolves right off.
Yeah. Maybe young kids walking around, they can be really mean, not careful, they really can. I, I thank everybody, and the, um, committee we were working with was really impressed with you and the things that you do, the attitude that you had, um, the answer to the questions we were asking, it was all perfectly what we needed, what we need now. Good luck.
So, did I make a motion?
Yep.
No, it's in the second discussion, yep, yep.
All those in favor of offering a two-year administrator's contract to Timothy Hart?
Okay.
Okay, good.
Congratulations, Tim.
Welcome, Tim.
And, and feel free to go, we've been a little later than, than I told you.
Sorry, I haven't been to a school board meeting, and. Quite some time.
Um, are you, is that it?
I'm done, except to say that the next personnel committee meeting will be August.
Or, or third?
Third.
August third.
Yep, third.
Yep.
At six.
And then, at six, yep, and I'm done.
Um, so on to policy, we had a meeting, um, on Tuesday, and we went through the, um, my brain's fried. We went through the list of all of the policies and looking at priorities, what's not, you know, what, when and where and how we're gonna do all of that, so we have a schedule started. Um, knowing that we have s- couple upcoming policies that may need attention over our schedule. Um, but otherwise, I think, it was a good reorg meeting.
Yep, I think we've got a good solid plan for how to approach getting through as many policies as we can this year in, in a reasonable way. Um, we are gonna be looking at F three, F four, F eight coming up at the next meeting. Um, and that's in the minutes, if you wanna go track that down. We're also gonna review some of the V S B A required recommended policies. Uh, the state mascot policy is coming, we'll have something August first, so that's something that will, will probably be setting on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, and we'll, we'll keep on rolling through them about three at a time, uh, as we can, so starting with F three, F four, F eight.
Yeah, and one of the things that we're doing too is comparing, as Brian said, the V S B A and ours. Um, we have a lot more policies than are required or recommended by the V S B A. And so I think, you know, we can reasonably, hopefully, eliminate some of them.
Well, do a comparison and prioritize.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, is what. Um, next meeting is the ninth at five thirty. And, Buildings and Grounds.
Oh, that's me. Um, we haven't had a meeting, but one thing I wanna give with you, Tim, and I also wanna get Gary involved sometime in the next month, month and a half, to get a little time together with the rest of the, uh, rest of the committee, hopefully. It's gonna take a lot of figuring out who's got the time and the capability of doing it, but we'll try, see what can I. I wanna find out from Gary how things go and how he's, uh, um, where he's responsible, and he's gonna make you responsible for certain things. And, uh, I'll, I'll even take a walk around and see what it's like. Um, I'm in the heating business, so it was really great, we got a chance to go in the boiler room with that new piece of equipment that run in a few million dollars worth. But it was, uh, it'll, it probably fits in this room just about, with the size. Um, so we'll be, uh, I'll be making something up in the near future. And welcome.
Um, community engagement. I know Sam is chair.
We haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting.
Okay. I should've asked you that before this, but I knew you were on it, and I have totally neglected Timothy here. Um, okay, so finance.
Good evening, yes, good evening. Uh, we have a lot for finance, because it is the end of the fiscal year. Um, I will start with pay orders, uh, for this evening. For fiscal year twenty-two, uh, from the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents. From the general fund, uh, an additional fiscal year twenty-two pay order in the amount of fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, from the general fund, a pay order in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and ninety, five thousand, two hundred dollars and nine cents. From after-school program, we have a pay order in the amount of six hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighteen cents. And from our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and ninety-three cents. And just to reiterate, that is for fiscal year twenty-two. You have one paid order from for fiscal year twenty-three from the general fund in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-one cents, for a grand, for a grand total of two hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. For payroll, we have payroll dated June seventy, seventeenth, oh man, I'm getting tired. June seventeenth, regular payroll in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Uh, dated June seventeenth, regular, it's labeled sheets, uh, a pay order in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Also from June seventeenth, regular year-end pay order for payroll in the amount of two million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Dated June twenty-fourth, labeled special one, we have a payroll order in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Also dated June twenty-fourth, labeled special two, a payroll order in the amount of fifty thousand, ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. Dated, dated June twenty-fourth, labeled special, a payroll order in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents. Dated June twenty-seventh, labeled change, a payroll order in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Dated July first, labeled regular sheets, a payroll order in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and forty-four cents. Also dated, excuse me, dated July first, labeled regular year. A payroll order in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Dated July fifteenth, labeled regular year. A payroll order in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. Dated July fifteenth, uh, labeled regular sheets, a payroll order in the amount of seventy thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-four cents. For a grand total in payroll warrants of two million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And I move that we accept and approve these pay orders and this payroll as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Doug, any discussion?
Yeah, Liz, Paul Garland. Uh, you know, that's a lot of money rolling by with very little detail out here.
So Doug and I, and members of the finance committee have the detail?
What would you like to know? Do you need one spot?
Well, I would've liked to known it before now, but was it available, and I just missed something?
Um, it would be available without a problem for you, if you, uh, requested, so we'll actually send it to you, we get.
Yeah, you know, I don't personally, I'm trying to act as a member of the community here. And if I'm sitting back as a member of the community, and I see this amount of money go by, and such a perfunctory response from the board, as if, yeah, no problem, whatever that was.
So we can, there's no reason we couldn't share it, we can't, there's no reason we can't share the detail now.
Yeah, I'm not trying to prolong the meeting here, it's already nine-thirty at night, but I'm just saying for future here, when we do this, maybe we could get, uh, just a little bit more detail in front of us prior to, to a vote. And Adrian's got something to say, so go ahead.
Oh, I just was wondering, you know, Doug, Doug reviews all these, these, um, paperwork. We always make sure that somebody goes through, um, every, every board meeting and, and, you know, reviews the, the full payout. 'Cause I've done it many times before I've signed it, if nobody else has done it first. And that's usually available for a few days before the board meeting.
Okay.
And I bet he'd be happy to have you come in.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm on the finance committee, and I, you know, I haven't seen it, so.
But Paul, I wanted to say, it's all money that we've put in the budget before, nothing is spent before, but it is nice to know where the budgeted money is going, and I, I totally understand, you just passed, yeah, two million dollars, sure, no problem, let's vote for it. But it is all money that's been, been approved, and it's being spent in the lines that we've approved it. But.
No, and I know.
It never hurts to have another person look at it.
I get it too, from Karen and you at before.
Yeah, I, I'm speaking as, as somebody outside of the board here.
I, I think, I think what Paul's, just to add a different context, um, like you hear payroll, no problem, it goes past you. But you hear a line that says special, you're like, hmm, I wonder what was special. Or you hear something that says sheets, you're like, you spent ten thousand dollars on sheets, it sounds like a lot of money on sheets.
Yeah, the word sheets involves, um, a number of, uh, of, of costs that go out in the same area. Uh, let's say, um, if we had a, a, a place with the chemicals and stuff, and, and we were doing, uh, uh, educating the kids, that may have what is one sheet, there's like a dozen of different things that go to there. We have a gentleman that's working with the kids, uh, went through this last winter, building a, uh, a, um, plant to, uh, get, uh, maple syrup, and he's, he's pretty much done with it, quite a bit there. All that stuff will come under what's called a sheet.
So maybe having a little more description than just sheets?
Well, it.
I mean, I know how Karen writes it up, and like, you know, I view it and stuff too.
Yeah.
But like, special one and special two, maybe just like a appendix, so that we know? Because if any community member asks us, well, why are you spending so much on sheets? What do you need bed sheets for? And we're like, no, it's not bed sheets, it's.
Yeah, so that's really, it's like internal labeling for the thing. So, um, I can certainly ask that, you know, the full register be sent out to the full board. Um, but, you know, just know that it's, this, it's the end of the year, it's a lot of taxes, um, you know, it, it's a lot, it's insurance, um.
It's multiple payrolls, because people get paid out through the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, right, and so the last payroll of the fiscal year is paycheck twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So teachers get five paychecks.
Sure.
In one lump sum, because the district doesn't pay them through the summer. So basically, public school teachers are paid for the, for the, for the school year, and they can opt for twenty-two payments or twenty-six payments. And the twenty, if you opt for twenty-six payments, so technically you're getting paid throughout the year, your, your twenty-second paycheck is actually five paychecks, so, um, but yeah, so we can have, um, Karen share the full register, so, 'cause I looked through it too. Basically, everybody, um, who receives it, uh, basically looks through to see it ahead of the meeting, but we can have it go to the full board, if that's what folks want.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah, great.
It scared me, I always saw this two-million-dollar things for a paycheck, and I think, whoa, what is going on, but it was a number of people. And some of them put out that they wanna get paid okay during the course of the year, but in the summertime, they get a lump for three months of that, because they've got a contract coming up for September, and they can use that money to go to the Cape, go to wherever it wants to be. But that way, that's their way of saving money for that, they can save it instead of spending it on something else.
My wife was a teacher, I know, I know how it works.
Um, so we're at vote.
Yeah.
Right, Liz?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So all those in favor of accepting adverbial payroll as presented, please raise your hand, and Andrea, if I, if you, I can't. It looks like everybody's.
It's unanimous.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I don't know who you have the next meeting scheduled. Um, let's see, one, two, three, four. Uh, we do have a meeting scheduled for the fourth Monday in August, which is, which is August twenty-second, and that meeting is scheduled for five p.m.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Um, ad hoc committees. Are they dormant?
Pretty much.
Can we take them off?
Well, I was going to say. Seeing how, um, they're looking at sending out surveys, I can, I'm talking mine, I don't, I can't speak. Seeing how, um, they're looking at sending out surveys, I can, I'm talking mine, I don't, I can't speak to Matt's. But my, our ad hoc committee was charged with, um, trying to find out why people may have left the district. I think it was very specific. But I think the survey that, that they're, that we're starting to do here, um, will be sufficient.
We wanna know before they leave.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can do something.
How things are going and, and that kinda thing. So in terms of my ad hoc committee, you can eliminate that.
Okay, and I'll check with Matt on his.
Yep.
All right.
Um, could I speak out, I, if, I think we made a commitment, at least, um, um, for Matt's committee, if, if he doesn't wanna continue, then the board really needs to have a conversation as to whether or not we're gonna follow through on what we said we were gonna do
Yeah.
for that committee. The fact that we haven't done it yet is, is pretty problematic. So we either have to commit or, or say that we're not gonna do it, which I think is not a good place to be.
Okay, well, we can...
Yeah, well, and I think, just like Lynn gave a rationale, I, I think it's reasonable to have a rationale, uh, for what we're doing next.
Yeah. Um, all right, any other legal business? Okay, agenda building.
Uh, we already have for August third, school safety and curriculum. Uh, I would hesitate to put too much more on that agenda, um, if we wanna keep trying to hit nine o'clock. Um, tonight's agenda even looked a little light, um...
Well, we had a lot of good discussion.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so we have that, and then the meeting after that is the...
We'll be doing strategic planning ahead of that seventeenth meeting, and we've got guidance report and mental health, uh, report for that meeting. So our August meetings, we have some reasonable pieces on there.
Does, does Coral need ten minutes in the third meeting or the seventeenth meeting?
The seventeenth meeting she'll need, probably.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, that makes, that would make sense.
Coral, just email me and let me know.
Yeah, my, my...
Or let Brian know?
Yeah.
And we can get you on the thing if you need it on the seventeenth.
Sounds good.
Um, are there other things we need August third?
I don't think so, that one's gonna be pretty hefty with that presentation.
School safety and curriculum, yeah, should both be. Yeah, and I would think a half hour each.
And Jody.
If not, a little more, um, once we ask questions, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Does that sound good? Anybody else have anything they wanna add in?
I'm sitting at, uh, sitting in a different spot next time.
Um, do we need an executive session? All right, uh, adjourn by consensus at nine-thirty-five?
That's good.
All right.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Bye.